Well, good evening, everybody. It's 6 o'clock and so we'll call this workshop together. I called this workshop specifically to address the issues of the VRBOs that are operating in the city. We do have, I'm sure you're familiar with the ordinance that we have, is 153-100, that restricts the operation of the VRBOs within the city, as well as the new ordinance that the county has just implemented, or just approved, that will go into effect on January 1st. The two ordinances have a lot of conflicts between them. The county ordinance does not restrict any VRBO in any area. It has a lot more restrictions and controls as far as how the VRBO is supposed to operate. There's some good points and bad points in both of them, I think. So we need to make some resolution between the two. This is not going to be an easy task. This is a very contentious issue. We have had some VRBOs that have been abusing the system and have not controlled their guests very well and alienated the neighbors. Going way, way, way back when, when this ordinance was, our ordinance was first implemented, that was specifically the reason, is we had, we basically had a party house and it was in attempt to regulate that party house where 153-100 was developed. But that was a long time ago and VRBOs were in their infancy at that point. We did not have very many at all, to the best of my knowledge. I don't really know how accurate this is. I would say there's probably maybe 50, 60, or 70 VRBOs operating in Breezy Point right now. So it's, there's a significant number that are out there, most of which are pretty innocuous. People don't even know they're there. They don't have a lot of parties. Other ones, you know, have had, you know, some complaints. We've had two or three complaints this year and some have been, you know, multiple complaints. So we do need to do something. Originally, I had, I was going to be tasking, planning, and zoning to do this update. And talking with Jerry and with Patrick, this is not a land use issue, so it really belongs with the city council. So the city council therefore has to take ownership of it and lead the charge for making this resolution between the two ordinances. Some of the, some of the questions that we need to resolve, should we even allow vacation rentals at all? That is, I guess, probably the number one gate. If we're going to disallow them, we would disallow them throughout the entire city. That has a lot of ramifications if we do that. There's been a lot of, there's several vacation rentals that have been operating for years and we have called them grandfathered in. Would we consider keeping that grandfather clause alive? That may or may not be fair to do something like that. And if they are allowed, would we restrict the zoning areas? The county ordinance just, it is totally silent on zoning. It doesn't say where it can be, where it can't be. It's just assuming that it can be allowed anywhere within the county and we have the opportunity to be more restrictive if we want and restrict to specific zoning or zoning areas. But keeping in mind, this is a resort community. This is part of the resort culture that we have around here. So that may or may not be a success path. And while we are doing this, this is something that just came up to me just recently, like in the last few minutes, I should say, should we suspend enforcement of our ordinance while we're trying to resolve this? This is not going to be resolved overnight. It's going to take, literally going to take months. And some of the things that I, basically I passed on to one of our constituents just last night was the fact that it's going to take months to get resolved. We may even have a total different makeup of the city council when this, before this gets resolved. So we do need to be very deliberate. We need to be very direct as to what we do and how we do it. We do lack a lot of information about vacation rentals. I've asked land services to tell me exactly how many, or let's put it this way, approximately how many, and who these vacation rentals are owned by. Because we need to get all of those owners involved with the discussion process, as well as the neighbors of these vacation rentals. And like I say, my best guess is, you know, 60 or 70 and they all have neighbors. Those neighbors need to weigh in if they're seeing problems or if they're not seeing problems. We need to take all that into account. And we also really need to fully understand what's contained in the county ordinance. I've read through that several times, as well as looked at all of the documents that are incorporated, state statutes that are incorporated by, incorporated by reference within the county ordinance. Those become actually part of the ordinance and surprisingly, they are very restrictive on the issues that, you know, can affect neighbors, as well as the health and safety of the renters. So at this point, what I'd like to do is, I need to be looking at what questions we need to be asking. Now, I've identified, you know, should we allow them at all? Should we restrict the areas? Let me go around the room and I'll start with you, Gary. What questions would you want to see asked and resolved as far as implementing a ordinance? This is obviously catching me kind of cold, but...
Yeah. Personally, I am not in favor of going above four days. Now, one of it is there implications that, are we going to run into anything with the county if we stay with the four days or change it to something other than what they approve? I guess that would be one question.
And I guess the answer to that is, we can be more restrictive. But again, something like that would be significantly restricting the rights of the property owner.
Yeah.
They want to rent their, that's, in some cases, that's their business. Would we be fair in restricting it so that they can't do business?
I have a feeling. I heard from people around Breezy that basically had nothing to do with it, much against it. And I, so I guess I need time to think about questions. I guess as we discuss this more, I probably have more questions, but right now...
Right. And at this point, I'm just looking for the first blush because there's going to be no decisions, no commitments. I just want to gather information on what questions we need to be addressing in this whole topic.
Okay, well...
And like I said, you're being first on the list, am I right?
Yeah. The huge difference between little city and turn it into a party rentals town is not my idea of treating the citizens properly. That's my thought.
So what I hear you saying is, we need to be asking the question, should we keep the four times per year?
Uh, yeah.
Michael, come to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some questions that I would kind of come up with is, you know, I know the county's, it will mention a fee schedule for, is if you do go down the path of allowing this, does the city get a cut of that? No, I assume not. And should the city charge an additional fee and get specific licenses from us? With that, if, again, we do go down the road of allowing it, and whether or not we charge a fee or not, the enforcement issues, is it a county level enforcement? Is it a sheriff issue? Or is it going to be local PD? Again, that's putting now more strain on our local police department enforcing what the county is being essentially getting the fees for. Is there reimbursement? Or is it a P&amp;Z thing? And again, how do we address those concerns at the hour when nobody's here to take those complaints? Mr. Mayor, you also bring up the restricting of rights of property owners. As it is, in a residential neighborhood, I cannot run a business. Are you restricting my rights there? So for us to say that we're restricting rights by not allowing vacation rentals, I say you're already restricting my rights because you're not allowing a business to run there. So I'd want to know, do we have legal ramifications that we, in vacation rentals, short-term rental, can we restrict it? If we can, then we should. You know, and it goes back down to locations. We restrict adult-use businesses. I, I draw lincoln exactly which area, but we have very limited areas that, like, this is going to be done. So I think they have a right to restrict on what locations or zoning areas that these could be done, if so in fact allowed to do so. So those are some of my points that, being second in line, that I want to have addressed within this, is if we go down the path of that, enforcement fees, and if we go down the path of leaving it where it's at, is are we really restricting it? We haven't been doing it for a while now, so we haven't had any complaints. So those are some of my feelings right now.
That's very good. Roger?
Michael brought up the enforcement. That was my big thing, but currently, it's the R4 that only allows more than four times. We all know there's some in R3 and R2. We don't get any...
They're all over.
They're all over. We don't get a fee currently, do we?
I think we only have, what, Jerry, is it just one condition use permit or...
Yeah, that's what it said, yeah. One permit, that's 200.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So how do you rein that in if you...
And that's, that's one of the issues that, you know, our enforce, our existing ordinance is not widely known, as well as, you know, hard to enforce.
So these county fees, did they just come up with this to make some more money? What do they really, I mean, those $200 for, what do they, what do you give with that?
Right. You'd have to ask, you'd have to ask the county what their fee is covering. But they do have some enforcement is under their notices.
Which probably drops back to the city. I know it says in there, though...
Yeah, not at my read, but, yeah.
I, I guess that's about all I can think of.
Marcy?
So my first question is, how widespread are the issues? You know, living here in Breezy, I know of many VRBOs that probably are not having any issues. If we have 60 to 70 of them and it's really only five that are having complaints and issues, to me, that looks like something that we could look more at, perhaps stricter penalties for failure to comply to current regulations, whatever we decide those are, and better enforcement of those, so that if somebody is being a problem house, which it sounds like there are, that those get, that there is a clear path to restricting them, maybe yanking their license, whatever it is to prevent that from continuing on. If there are, the majority of the VRBOs are not an issue, perhaps allowing and continuing to allow a certain number of turnovers, a certain amount of that, because that is part of our community, is that this is a vacation spot and it can be healthy to our community and drawing people in, having them utilize our businesses, and keeping the area vibrant. It's just a matter of, the ones that have issues, how can we prevent that or regulate that better? And then, I echo a lot of your same concerns, you know, what are the fees? Who's enforcing it? Is this a draw on our police department? From talking to some of our police officers, it sounds like that can be definitely the case. And if this continues to expand, according to the county regulations, it could. Does that mean we have to hire extra law enforcement? Is that becoming a bigger part of their job instead of other things that they could be spending their time on? So my first question really is just to figure out how big of an issue is and then are there opportunities for us to have better enforcement of it? Perhaps licensing fees, something like that, to be able to regulate it.
Joe?
I'm wondering if the 2010 ordinance has helped this issue. And I'm wondering if the revisions of that ordinance has helped this issue. Do we know if these complaints are coming from the grandfathered rental units or if they're coming from rental units?
Primarily, to the best of my knowledge, this, at least the one that is the most contentious, that was originally a grandfathered in and then it was sold to a private owner and then sold to a, another private owner. So in that case, the grandfather ceases on the first sale for over a year. So the answer is, the one that is the most contentious is operating totally illegally.
So that helps to answer the question of whether ordinances help this issue or are having no impact on this, on this issue.
And this gets exacerbated by the ability of us to follow through under our existing ordinance. We don't have any, you know, quick fines or anything like that that we can impose on. We are working through the legal process and the, we've said, but the lawyer has sent letters to the, to the owners and at that, that's where it stands at this point. It's moving through the process. I'll just put it that way.
I guess that's my, my question.
Tracy?
Well, first I have a question. Gary, you said, you were talking about four days and I thought it was four times. So you could rent it for two weeks, and then two weeks, and then two weeks, and then two weeks. But I thought I heard you say four days, so...
No, I meant, if I did, I meant four times.
Okay. My sense, my concern, I think, is that, I think the county's proposed regulations would be very detrimental to us as a city and therefore, I may be jumping ahead, it seems to me that our attorney ought to be doing whatever he can to let the county know that we're not going to, I'm thinking, we don't want to comply with the county program. So I don't know how we tell them, "No, you can't do it" here in Breezy Point, but that would be one of the biggest issues that I would have. We talk about the rights of the owners, and I feel strongly, I think somebody else made the comment, I think that the rights of the neighbors are as important as the rights of the individual owner, property that's in contention. And more so, to those people that have their home in an area and then all of a sudden, somebody comes in and sets up a VRBO. They, the original owners, didn't buy into that. And so, to me, they have as much, or maybe even more, right to make sure that they have what they expected they have. I do applaud your sense that we're going to have to do some balancing and do whatever. And I've also always felt fairly strongly that whatever rules we, we do agree on, we need to enforce them, enforce them aggressively. And that doesn't mean go look and verify and then four days later, send a note to the owner and negotiate. To me, and I don't know how you do it, if they're causing a problem today, you ought to get them to quit causing the problem today. I don't know how you do it, sort of fall them off to jail. So those are some of my thoughts.
So I'll start off with Michael and Marcy. And I'm in agreement with the strain to law enforcement, you know, what will that pose as a problem for the police, for short-term rentals that get out of control with noise ordinance or nuisance to neighbors? And if restrictions are placed at a city level, how do we plan on going about enforcing that, considering that the same strain that we're talking about for VRBO, for law enforcement, would also be the same strain for them to enforce it, since currently, the four times per year has been almost unenforceable, difficult to track? So it's almost like they would, the property owners, you know, if we proceed to expand it for them to have short-term leasing opportunities that they obviously need to register, we need to know who they are and where the property's located. I also have concerns about environmental impacts for properties that are on the waterfront. If the homes are occupied by 20 individuals, four-bedroom house is a septic system prepared to handle that? You know, I know that there were some concerns and issues on Lake Ossie about that previously on their Friends of Lake Ossie page on Facebook. So, you know, I don't, I don't want to see issues with lake water contaminants and what have you in the future. As far as what the county did, I think they overstepped and I really do agree with Gary and Tracy that I think that four times a year is enough. I think if they wanted a rental, it would be a long-term lease agreement. They can still cash flow on it. You're not restricting them from, basically, they're just, it's an attempt to excessively profiteer every month at $2,500 a week, just because the property has the Breezy Point name on it. So that's, that's where I'm at.
Okay. Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All very good points everybody has brought up and you stole a lot of mine, but that's quite all right. I personally have, there's four formal complaints sitting in front of me here. I've had seven phone calls, personal phone calls, over the summer, I guess, last three months, from folks who are very unhappy. There's a situation on North Lakeview Drive that I cannot share the specifics of it, but I can look you all in the eye and tell you, for the first time in my almost 30 years here, I'm ashamed to say I live in Breezy Point, the first time, and I love this city with every molecule in my body. I can't reveal what it was, but it was despicable. That said, it revolves around the city council. We have to take control of this situation. And by the way, I think it can be done is, I've heard a lot of, well, four, of course, fine, but we have to put some teeth in the ordinance, write a new ordinance, and some checks and balances. And I don't care if our police department has to do it. That's what we pay them the money for, folks, and they get paid very well and we have the It will come out a consensus from the brain trust here. Now, I've got one question. Jerry, do we know how many of these are conditional use permits or just straight grandfathered properties? Do we know?
We do not.
All right. I think that's something we need to look at. Which is a grandfathered property? And again, over and over and over, the conditional use permit is the ideal tool to use to control the problem we've got. I.e., these are the conditions, the city somehow, and I'm working on a, on a program and a proposal, a city tracks perhaps the owner, or they have to register with the city, who's there, and we keep track of how many times that property is rented. Now, with the conditional use permit, it's conditional. You violate the conditions, you lose the privilege of what the city has granted. Just off the top of my head, you violate it once, you get slapped on the wrist. You violate it twice, or maybe three times, I would say twice, and you lose your conditional permit. That's teeth in an ordinance. And when we pass, the city passes out, these are the rules, you violate them, you lose your conditional use permit. I don't see any other way, folks, to control this, and it has got to be controlled. It has been a thorn in the city's side forever and we've just looked the other way. So I commend the mayor taking the bull by the horn here and we've got to address this problem.
Does someone have something? What's that?
Well, there's a lot of great points that have been made. And Marcy, I'm just going to go back to kind of your point and I know we've all been discussing the problem kind of area, but I do think it is important to address, you know, how widespread the issue is stated. You can create a new ordinance, you can have licensing, which I think may work better than COP or IUP.
Got to tease it.
Right. Where there, you can revoke the license as opposed to try to take away and get people to come in.
However it manifests itself.
But I think there's a way to offer short-term rentals in a city like Breezy Point and do that with licensing and an ordinance that has teeth and consequences for not following the ordinance and not completely do away with short-term rentals. I think it's important to probably look at what other similarly situated cities are doing. I see the article that you handed out, I saw that on the Lakeview Minnesota City's site as well, for other cities and what they're doing. as well, for other cities and what they're doing. I think it would be helpful to find out exactly what they did, how they built their ordinance. Like, one of the articles did talk about like certain taxes, you know, that the city's also trying to collect because their city does allow for, you know, certain taxes that they can also add on to help with expenses and things like that with enforcement. I know that CUP ordinance has some enforcement too, like you said, Mayor, so that probably could work in concert with the city. I'd like to work in coordination with the county in kind of developing the city ordinance that can be more restrictive than CUP ordinance, as I understand, which I'm not opposed to. I think one of the questions, I know you're asking for questions, like city sewer, is that still something we want to require? I think it was a good point about certain areas, do we, is there really a need to restrict it to certain areas within the city? There's been some discussion about the number of people in the bedrooms, I mean, obviously that will come up, you know, that's something that we can make more restrictive than it's in the county ordinance.
Okay. One of the things I have been doing is looking very closely at the county ordinance. It has a lot more fidelity in it with regards to the property itself, as far as the septic system has to be inspected. Really, well, we don't allow VRBOs unless you're on city sewer, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense, most of them are not. So that has, you know, some real benefits. And to Rebecca's point about the number of bedrooms and the size of the bedrooms, that's where it gets into the fine points, and you have to go into the state statutes. It defines the size of the bedroom, how many square feet per person you have to have, how far apart the beds have to be. In many cases, I suspect, you will find that the county ordinance will be in conflict with the state statutes because rooms will be too small for the number of people that they have allowed under the county ordinance. And the state statute would take precedence over the county ordinance in that case because it has been adopted by reference. And as far as enforcement, it very clearly states that Crow Wing County will investigate all complaints and violations of this ordinance, and they have the ability to revoke the license. Some of these things, very specifically, I think are good things to have. We may want to, if we decide we want to have our own ordinance, parrot things out of the county ordinance and allow them in specific areas under control. There's another thing I was going to talk about, but I got sidetracked. Oh, and to your point, not a CUP, it's an IUP, because the IUP is completely revoked.
Yeah.
Conditional use permit.
Well, that's okay.
You know that.
Yeah. Excuse me.
But the whole idea with the licensing, I think that is something that we should be having if we are going to be allowing it, because that will give us control. And again, I said before that I have asked Land Services to give me a list of all the VRBO owners. They don't have that list yet, they expect to have it in a few more months, but at least give me a count. And I was hoping to get that by today, but I didn't receive it yet from Gary Griffin. That being, you know, that being the case, we will have an idea when we come time to be doing public hearings. We can contact all of the impacted parties because that is very important, to get everybody Those that are doing VRBOs right now, we would have a significant impact on what they are doing, obviously, by doing this. And it's going to be a significant impact because even if we do nothing, they will have to get a license from the county. Over, even if we do absolutely nothing, they have to get a license from the county. Mark?
Just real quick, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned that the county would enforce the VRBOs, so violators would be under their watch, per se. What reassurances do we have? Can we add that question to it? What, are they, are they prepared countywide to be able to, you know, police that? I mean, I'd like to know, and then no offense to the county, because I know Gary Griffin, you know, Land Services, I don't know if they're in charge of it all, they'll do a fantastic job with where they're at, but I want to know how, you know, what, how is that possible without putting the buck back on?
It says right here, black and white, that the county will investigate all complaints and alleged violations. We know that that takes care of everybody.
There's our answer.
There's our answer right there.
Would you read the next sentence?
Yeah.
No, seriously, read the next sentence.
I'll read the whole thing. Crow Wing County will investigate all complaints and alleged violations of this ordinance. Crow Wing County will follow up all owners or owners authorized agents in complaints within a reasonable period of time. The owner or owner's authorized agent shall address any substandard complaints and violations as directed by Crow Wing County. All substantiated complaints, violations, not resolved as directed or resort, will result in enforcement action as provided in 6.4. You go down to 6.4, and it talks about where their license can be forfeited.
I'd also like to further add that, you know, most rentals have inspections to look out for public safety, loose handrails, working smoke detectors, so on and so forth. Is the county prepared to do those as well?
That is one of the big holes in this, because when you go basically up into the very beginning section, under 1.2, it's under the scope, it says pursuant to Minnesota statutes 145A.01 through 145A.11, chapters 157, chapter 327, 375.51 through 55, and Minnesota rules 4625.100 through 4625.2300, relating to lodging establishments, all subsequent amendments thereto are hereby adopted by Crow Wing County by reference. That means those state statutes are part of the ordinance, okay? And I pulled all of those, I read them. And that's where it gets into the details on how far apart the beds have to be. It gets into the details on how hot the water can be, you can't have it too hot. It gets into a lot of details, and personally, I don't think the county looked at all of those when they adopted this, because there's a lot of teeth in there.
I'm very familiar with 327A, which is the Minnesota State Building Code. So yeah, that's, I just don't see them being able to monitor inspection records and whatnot.
3.5 says they can though, not that they won't, but they can. Okay, so they can go in and inspect the property.
Yeah, I mean, it's, all the, I think all the right stuff is there, and can we be skeptical on them enforcing it and doing what they say they have written here? Yes, we can.
I'll be looking for the Job Fair posting, because they're going to need a whole new division.
And part of it is why the state does not want to touch this issue, because they don't have the manpower or anything to enforce it throughout the state. This has been, I've been following this issue probably five or six years. I've been going to various meetings and stuff on the VRBOs in the county where they've wanted information on how Breezy Point ordinances work. And, you know, I say, it's really not working from the standpoint of we, we know we have VRBOs, but we can't identify them, and people aren't complying with it. The county with the hammer that they have, I can see the VRBOs getting the license because there is enforcement if you do not get a license, whereas we say, in order to operate, you have to get a license. Well, if nobody tells us they're operating, you don't know, we don't know they're there, okay? The state is going around, and they have a software program that is crawling the web looking for VRBOs, okay? The VRBOs will be classified as commercial, commercial property, okay? And the commercial taxes are virtually double that of residential taxes.
I assume they lose their homesteading.
Yes.
Of course, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, so I mean, there will be a significant economic impact just because of this, this coming down from the state, has nothing to do with the county.
Right.
The county then gets the information from the state, and they will be able to identify each and every one of these VRBOs. Another thing that is kind of a fly in the ointment is that several of these VRBOs are in actuality time shares. These, there's certain specific weeks, and so when you look at the VRBO listing, it shows a timeshare, and it has specific dates that can be rented. Obviously, the owners have purchased multiple weeks, and he's renting out these as a VRBO during his week. And I don't know.
That's pretty slick.
Yeah, it's pretty slick, right? As well as there are some VRBOs that are owned and operated by the resort, so they're, you know, technically resort properties. There are VRBOs that are owned by private individuals that are managed by, like, Narvis and Management. So it's a mix, and it's going to be very interesting to see how this all comes out after the first of the year and see if these renters actually belly up to the bar and start getting their ordinances. Tracy, you have?
Yeah, I'm sensing that everyone is accepting the fact that the county's going to do it. And my feeling is, I like what you have now, and we need to know whether we can legally keep what we have now, or some variation of it, and not be subject to the county. So to me, that's a legal question that need, you can't wait until after the first of the year and then have somebody writing, saying, no, we're not going to be under that law. And again...
Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, when the county ordinance goes into effect, it goes into effect everywhere unless we specifically restrict it.
My understanding is that no matter what you have, the county is, ordinance is going to supersede that at this point.
Okay, so that means, that means they don't have to be on our sewer system, number one. Number two, if they're not on our sewer system, and they've got their own septic system, I hear of one horror story with a guy with a VRBO, doesn't have space, so he's kind of, he's got an agreement from the property owner across the road to put a septic system in, and so he's got his sewer line going under the road. Now, there's a question whether or not it's a public road or a private road or whatever, but it's a real headache, and to me, what you got now, if we can figure out how to enforce it, is much better. And now, and again, if there's a sense that we're going to try to do that, then we've got to get the legal opinions about whether or not the city, the county can enforce this. Of course, they'll have their hands in force.
And we do have some concerns on the legality of our ordinance, whether it would stand up in court or not, but right now, we're assuming that it is valid, and we are pursuing, you know, resolutions or, yeah, resolutions under our existing ordinance.
You also, pardon me, Mr. Mayor, you made a comment earlier, I thought you said, that you didn't think that the requirement to be on sewer made any sense.
No, I didn't say that. I said, our existing ordinance is restricted only to those that are on city sewer. Yeah.
And then I thought you said it didn't make any sense.
Most of the, most of the VRBOs are not on the city sewer.
Yeah, I can understand that.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question? When the county ordinance goes into effect on January 1st, if we did absolutely nothing, wouldn't it be true that our ordinance is currently more restrictive and our ordinance for the city would still be in play? I think so.
Yeah, Jerry?
I think Michael's got a point. I think from our standpoint, though, the biggest concern is that if a property owner in Breezy Point goes to the county, applies for a license, doesn't take into consideration the zoning classifications that we have, doesn't take into consideration any rules that Breezy Point has, and the county issues a license without consulting the city, I think the message that's being sent is that there's a lot of screw-ups between two governmental organizations, and the message is, it's okay, because I got a license, I can do it no matter what the city says. I think that's the biggest concern that we have from an enforcement standard coming up. I think it's, I think the confusion is going to be something that we really don't want to deal with.
Right, which is the, kind of the whole crux of this effort that we're going to be embarking on, is to try and get some ability.
Unfortunately, we can't try, we need to enforce that idea, even if we let it, or if we become more restrictive, or we did something different. The county needs to acknowledge that, that if anybody comes to the city of Breezy Point, they need to reference our ordinance, whether it stays the same or it's completely different. They need to look at our city, every city ordinance, before they pass that license from a county perspective. The county needs to know that, I think we need to make them aware of that. It's not just Breezy Point that has a specific ordinance, I'm sure other cities do too, and the county cannot just go, you're in the Crow Wing County, here's your license. They need to look at every single city ordinance, almost a prerequisite to say that you have to go get a city license before you come to the county.
Jerry?
We actually, when this whole county concept came about, we actually asked the county staff, we asked them about how they were going to enforce it, number one, and number two, we asked them whether they, if they got an application from Breezy Point, whether they were going to check with Breezy Point first to see if it would be okay to issue that license. They said, we're not going to do that. We are just going to issue a license based on the application, and they're filling out the paperwork. That's the bigger concern for us right now.
And really, if the county one is less restrictive, it makes more sense to where the county first meet that threshold and then have to meet the city ordinance or get the city license after that, because if you can't meet the lower threshold that the county has, then you're certainly not going to meet the city's.
I think it would be...
And I agree, Jerry, that there's, there's going to be a problem there.
I think depending on the county, we're in trouble. My experience has been in life that the county, for many reasons, has trouble enforcing a lot of things. And if we can't control it and police it with our own police department, have our own fire department do inspections, smoke alarms, et cetera, then we're in big trouble. We need to, the city needs to be able to call that, and there's...
You may.
You call the sheriff's department, say there's problems going on here, they might show up an hour or two later, where Breezy Point would be there in 10 minutes or less, if they even come that day. My experience was, depending on the county to do enforcement is, I know in county, the state troopers and the game ward is laughing at the law department. Now, I'm not, I don't know a lot about our law department, but I do know that counties have problems enforcing issues. have problems enforcing issues and become lax at very quickly.
But I can say, this is a very hot button issue at the county. It was, it was a significant effort. They had several meetings on it and the meeting rooms were packed.
What Jerry just said is, is a huge warning.
Mm-hmm. And those.
We need to address it as quick as we can.
I doubt very much if we're going to get it totally resolved by the first of the year.
Have we started the process of, I mean, has some, has an attorney written the county a letter and said, brought this issue up?
Uh, no.
Don't we have to start with that? If we're not.
Is there, is there a correlation between other cities within the county?
Not that I know of.
Can we ask staff if any communication has been happening with other city administrators, how other cities are handling it, or is it?
I don't know of any other city that I, that actually has an VRBO ordinance.
So they're just going to accept the county rule?
From the mayors that I've talked to, uh, yeah, they don't care. They're, it's, it's not an issue in their cities.
They're not resort cities.
They're not.
They don't have a reputation for resorts, for lakes, you know, all.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
Marcy?
Huge difference.
I did talk to somebody in Cross Lake that was on the committee up there, and they said they were in process of creating a VRBO policy when the county came out, and they decided to just let the county come out with their policy, see how it runs, and then come back to the issue at a later date. Because they were in progress.
And I think that's the way it was being looked at. Our ordinance has been in place for a long time, and a lot of cities were asking us how our ordinance worked, as well as, you know, the county was looking at what we had. There was only, trying to think, maybe two or three other cities that may have had some sort of regulation attempt on rentals, but there wasn't much. Ours was but part of the most, or most exhaustive, let's put it that way, and ours isn't very much.
You know, the other thing that comes to mind too is, we did work with the county with golf cart permits, that we are the only city with a company, that I believe right now still, we issue licenses that allow in county roads. So they are willing to work with individual cities in some cases, so I think they should be in this regard as well.
Right. But it took us almost, what, almost two years to have a [inaudible]. So I mean, it's, it's not going to happen quickly, that's why I say it's, like I say, the first comment that I have on my paper here is, it's going to be a very difficult and contentious issue to resolve. We're just scratching the iceberg. Joe?
Am I correct in saying that the grandfathered rentals, that our ordinance does not apply to them because they existed before the ordinance? So is the logical conclusion that we can't hold them accountable at all?
And that is one of the questions, is that when we revise our ordinance, will we still consider grandfathered units in? In other words, you know, not under the enforcement of the, or would we take them out and we say, all vacation rentals have to be under our ordinance and take them out from the grandfather?
Well, right now, they can tell us, you can't hold us accountable.
Problem is, we don't know all of who they are.
Well, yes. But if, if you did get a complaint and it was a grandfathered rental, technically, we, we couldn't hold them accountable for.
We can't hold them accountable for not having an interim use permit. We can't hold them accountable for noise standards or.
The nuisance.
The nuisance things. Marcy?
I know that this is a workshop, at the end of the day, the buck stops with the city council, but I really encourage every one of you to not take a backseat position like Cross Lake has chosen to do.
Right.
But be at the forefront as best you can to represent.
Because what I want to do is to get a thorough look at this. Obviously, if we totally disallow them, it's going to have a, a big impact on, you know, financially on the city, you know, or the, the revenue that gets brought in here, going to restaurants, convenience store, gas station, the whole gamut of things that we have here for sale, as well as if we outlaw them, then technically, none of them would be classified as commercial, and that would be a, a tax hit that we would see. I mean, it's not a, a real easy thing to, to answer, but what, but I do want to have a thorough investigation on it. I'm considering having, appointing a champion for enforcing, or adopting the county ordinance and a champion for rejecting the county ordinance. So put a couple people up basically outside their comfort zone, but they would be doing, be do, be the advocate for the VRBO and one for, an advocate against the VRBO. I think that's the way we're going to get the best information and get the best debate that we can.
Firsthand, yeah.
So. Joe?
Has, has the resort taken a position on this at all? You know, I potentially see them as, that our, our ordinance could, could actually be considered promoting competition for them.
Well, and that was one of the reasons and the underlying issues associated with the development of the county ordinance, was that it's not a level playing field for the resorts. In many areas, the local communities will have a lodging tax, okay? The VRBOs are not paying that lodging tax. Whitefish Chain specifically has a, a fee that everybody pays into to promote the, the development of the lake, and the VRBOs don't pay into that, okay? There's a lot of things that get left out because the VRBO is running under the radar.
I'm, I'm sure you've thought of this, but it seems as though the resort has a major stake in this.
Yeah, that was the next thing I was going to get to, is the resort is officially opposed to VRBOs. Because it's, it's, it's competition, you know, and they are not playing by the same set of rules. The resort has to have a health license, okay? They have inspections. The VRBOs don't have any of that.
They have security. They pay for security.
They pay for security. They pay for all sorts of things that the VRBOs don't have, okay? Plus, they're paying, paying commercial taxes, VRBOs aren't, okay? So the official position of the resort, of the Breezy Point Resort, is that they are opposed to the VRBOs operating. Because, and not because it's direct competition, because, hey, that's good, but it's because it's not a level playing field. The resort is operating up here, the VRBOs, VRBOs are operating down here. And I've got about two minutes before we can wrap, we have to wrap this up. There will be a lot more to, to talk about. Marcy?
Is a resort opposed to the current Breezy Point ordinances or the?
Pretty much neutral on it because those units that they are actually operating, it's operating grandfather, okay? They were operating before our ordinance went into effect, which is one of the things that I think we need to look at. And it wasn't until I started looking very specifically at the pictures and stuff that show up on the VRBO website, and that's where I noticed, that's a timeshare, okay? This is, I know, I know, you know, friends of ours have the, the timeshare unit, and that's one of the units that they have, must have done VRBO, as well as, you know, some of the dockside, not dockside, but beachside apartments and stuff like that, all of which basically are part of the overall resort, so. Tracy?
When you say VRBO, are you also including Airbnb?
Yeah, technically, the term is vacation rentals. It's VRBO, Airbnb, Home, I don't know, Home, again?
Homeaway.
Homeaway, yeah.
Homeaway.
Yeah. There's, there's several other smaller outfits, but VRBO is the biggest one, so I use VRBO generically. Well, we've got about 60 seconds left.
So you said that between 50 and 70 at Breezy, there could be 100?
There could be, and then I won't know that until I get the information from land services.
How are they getting it?
And how would they?
They're getting it from state.
And the state has a bug in, in the internet? We've got a little investigator going in. I like that.
They have a software program that's very similar to, it's called like a web crawler. It goes and investigates these places, and it, it's pretty good at identifying, so.
So they're going to come up with a list like you say, right?
And that will be, that will be the list that the state uses to classify these as commercial properties.
Can we get our hands on that?
That's what I'm asking for.
Good, I like that idea.
Because, like I say, when it gets down to the public hearings, we need to have both sides informed, of course, because a lot of times, we put a notice in the paper, public hearing on VRBOs, and two people see it.
That's, that was the best news.
The county would share out their, those who've got like.
Absolutely, that was one of the conditions, was that they, that was one of the points specifically I was asking for.
There's a lot of them flying under the radar too.
There's a lot of them.
Now, you're sure?
Yeah. Like I say, it's not going to be an easy topic. Well, it's seven o'clock, so don't be [inaudible].
Mr. Mayor, thank you for your good work on this.
It's just beginning. And hopefully, it'll all, all be around next year, so.
You will.
Nothing is certain.
No. Thanks, everybody.
You have this.
You have one.
[inaudible].
Yeah. A tomahawk.
Handset. Oh, yeah. Throw it down with alcohol.
You can use your hand or you can. Thank you, I've never used it, so.
Well, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
There's going to be a lot of work that we need to do, and we need the help of everybody.
Put your word, Rebecca. We need a legal mind.
Well, Jerry, your folks.
Sure, there's a really good term that works all the time in here.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
My question is, can I, if, if you have something, you know, if we have any.
I'm going to leave that on here, we've got our next meeting that I have planned on for, so.
Yes, sir, I put up the planning commission agenda, and even though it's the same information what it is, seven o'clock on there and it's not good. We've got another meeting here, so you walk the city, the public.
I will call the meeting of the Breezy Point Planning Commission to order and ask for approval of the August minutes.
Make a motion, the, through the minutes?
Second. You have a motion in a second? Any discussion of those minutes? If not, all in favor of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? Motion passed. City Council is on report. Michael?
Good evening, Chair, Commission. City Council did meet last week. We had a number of items up for discussion. We had a revised capital improvement plan for equipment from Parks and Rec and Sewer Department, so we went through that, approved that. Basically, it's setting the policy of how much to budget for each year for new pieces of equipment going forward, so we have a, an idea of exactly when things are, are needing to be budgeted for for purchase and replacement, so we're just not caught out of the lid that we need a new $200,000 piece of machine because the old one is, is ended life. So we approved that. We did talk about 2021 liquor license fees. That was discussion that the fee schedule will potentially be adjusted at the November meeting, and this is in regards to directly to COVID. We collect all license fees for this year, but we collected them in 2019, and so along with other cities, we kind of fall in line that they kind of offer some relief to liquor establishments on reducing those fees or returning that in a way. So we talked about setting those. We had council salary discussion, that will be up for public hearing in, in November. Some boilerplate items were updated, use of force policy from the police department. We did also, if you haven't seen the new SWATs, you know, at least they got lettered differently, and so we decided to get the rest of the enforcement vehicles all re-lettered, so it's just one look amongst all of them. Gives a little bit of uniformity to our look in the community here. We have a new park committee appointment. Connie Maroni was assigned with also Officer Garcia, asking to be an ex-officio, also in Parks and Rec. And we are also sending RFP for IT services. NGPA for now Sourcewell was handling our IT. They will cease that on the end of January, so we're looking for a new IT provider. If you do have any questions, anything specific that I did touch on, I'd be happy to answer.
I thought the lifecycle analysis that Public Works put together was very, very thorough, very informative.
How many, how many police cars does the city have?
Six. We have six with one extra. So we do reserve, we keep, we keep a spare vehicle if you would, for part-time officers, or should an officer be in an accident, beer hits, you know, maintenance wise.
How many police officers do you have?
Six.
Six. Okay. Marcy, any questions?
Mm-hmm.
Roger? Thank you, Michael. Open forum number one. Would anyone like to speak during open forum number one? If not, I'll close open forum number one and move to review of lot size standards, minimum house size standards. Jerry, I think, can help us look at this.
Maybe I can, maybe I can. Maybe I can just confuse you more.
It might be tough to do here.
This is a follow-up of a couple of previous meetings that we, we had. We had a discussion about reviewing block size requirements that we have in different zoning areas. We also talked about minimum size for dwellings and minimum sizes in different areas. Most of them are pretty much the same. What prompted that discussion was a thought that potentially, if we were to reduce minimum house sizes, maybe we would be making housing more affordable. I don't know that there was any consensus that was gained by, by this group or, or any group, quite frankly, at, at this point, but we did make the comparison for you, we have that in front of you. We also asked us to look at some of the adjacent communities to talk about minimums, house sizes. Most have a minimum width and very few have a minimum square footage. Those are also listed for your information on that spreadsheet. Where this goes, I. Where this goes, I, I honestly don't know. If the planning commission thinks that this is something we should pursue or we should be, should we be pursuing lot size? Different lot sizes, lesser, lesser, greater? Should we be looking at house size? Should we be looking greater house size, lesser house size? I think this is more of a discussion item than anything at this point. We don't know that there's a champion going one way or the other. The one thing I should tell you is that we have this discussion and this year we have thirty-two, we have issued thirty-two new house permits.
Is that a lot?
That's a lot. We've been averaging fifteen to twenty, which is, is a lot for Corwin County, quite frankly. We're one of the highest in Corwin County and have been for the last seven or eight years. But this year's been an outstanding year. I think the interest rate has something to do with that. I think even COVID has had a positive effect on, on some of that. People are sick of the homes that they're in, either looking to upsize or downsize or whatever. I think there's a number of reasons why this is happening. But it, the housing market is escalating all over the, the state. Biggest problem right now is material prices.
So this discussion of this, I do recall us asking for Jerry to come up with the numbers for other communities. I think that was something that we were interested in seeing, but Marcy, you.
Well, I was just kind of, kind of refresh my memory. Are you seeing more people coming in asking for smaller lots or smaller square footage sizes for homes? Is that common?
I, I think I've, I've had one question that and have a negative reaction to it. Other than that, I haven't had a lot of negativity because of that.
From a building standpoint, do you hear from people wanting to buil- build smaller homes?
No, we account for eight of the thirty-two building permits in the city for this year. Material cost increases of thirteen thousand per house, just for us alone. I can't speak to the others. I don't think people are looking for smaller housing necessarily. However, in reference to the still active tax forfeited parcels, reducing buildable lot size and hence reducing the size of the footprint of the dwelling constructed on it may serve to benefit the city of Breezy Point to eliminate the non-challenging or non-topographical affected lots that are still available. I mean, the common consensus right now on surrounding cities is an average of twenty-two foot depth as opposed to our twenty-six. So that's something to consider.
But with thirty-two permits, there's enough existing lot sizes that are out there that to build them, the way I see it.
If there's, if there's anything that Breezy Point has, it's a, it's an abundance of.
Buildable lots?
Buildable lots.
So these, some of these tax forfeited lots, as you know, Mark, are, you couldn't put a ten by twelve storage shed on it because they are.
Mine all meet the minimum requirements, Roger, but yeah, there are some that are still active that don't, they're either not, they're on a minimum maintenance road that beyond that point, you couldn't build anyway. But.
Jerry?
There's a, there's another, and I think when we go back to ancient history here, that when they, when they looked at minimum lot sizes in, in Breezy, one of the things that they were very cautious about was making lot sizes too small that it was going to have a negative effect on the waters. I think they're, I think they were very cautious with that, at that approach and to, to the, probably to the, to the conservative side of it. The other part of it is that if you don't have a big enough lot, how do you support the house and a, and a septic system and have another site on the lot for a septic system if the first should pay it, fail? There's, there's a lot of areas in this community that are never going to be serviced by city sewer and will continue to be serviced by individual wells and septic systems. I think the protection of the individual wells and the protections of the waters, I think is, has kind of formulated where we are right now in lot size is concerned. I, I know that specifically on, on the lakes and specifically Ozzie was a big concern at the time that the previous comp plan was done. They even had, the old comp plan even had some, some language in it that was almost requiring enhanced treatment methods rather than traditional wells and our septic systems. So I, I think we have to, I think we have to honor that, that philosophy of protecting the waters, protecting the groundwater and the lakes. It's the biggest resource that Breezy has. And not only do we, you know, we think of Pelican and Ozzie, but we also have some environmental lakes within the community that are valuable resources also.
Jerry, has the placement of mobile homes ever been an issue in Breezy Point?
Well, I think that's, the placement of mobile homes is, is a reason that most communities have a minimum width on, on homes. They didn't, they didn't want those mobile homes intermixed with residential areas.
Do, do.
I can't speak for Breezy, but I, I can speak for some previous communities that I've worked with that that was specifically done to eliminate that. At the time that that was done, these, these go back to the, the late seventies, actually. And at the time that it was done, there were a lot of the mobile homes that weren't meeting state building code. There wasn't a code in a lot of communities. They'd blow over in the, if they were placed, they'd blow over in a big wind. Didn't have foundations under them. That's the reason you have some of the rules that you have today. I think the, the biggest thing you see today is folks that are potential buyers of lots. They're looking at pre-made homes, modular homes. There's, there's a lot of that, that speculation going on today. They may be a little cheaper than stick-built, I don't know. But they, they go up fast and they get done quick and, and that is a, a trait that, that some folks like. They're still allowing under our, our ordinance today as long as they meet that minimum.
A manufacturer.
Width.
Okay.
Couldn't you bring in a double Y and B?
As long as it meets the minimum, as long as it meets the minimum width standard, yes, you can.
So we don't have any foundation code that would.
Well, I think it, I, there is a, it requires a permanent foundation.
Okay, yes. Which usually is an expense that someone who wants that situation doesn't want to incur.
I think when you look at the investment, I think today you need it. But it is part of our code.
The house size of the tall ninety-six without a garage is a pretty good size house. Like I said, if you put a two-story up and have a basement, you will have thirty-seven hundred square feet by the time you're done with that thing. Of course, you wouldn't build that size of house without a garage, so.
Well, if they do build it without a garage, it's coming with a, with a, a pool shed that's forty by fifty and a, and sixteen-foot high wall sidewalks.
Yeah.
Now, I think I've said this before. I, correct me if I'm wrong or if someone can help refresh my memory. I recall somebody at one of our meetings asking us to take a look at land use in regard to, now I'm trying to remember the politically correct word that the mayor wants me to use. Employer, employee housing.
Workforce housing.
Workforce housing. Why couldn't they think of that, that term? Am I right, Jerry? Do you remember that?
Well, I remember the, you know, the.
Some of those discussions.
But I, I think we were talking about workforce housing in the, in the context of rentals versus single-family homeowners. I, I think.
But don't I recall somebody asking us to take a look at, at land use issues?
I believe Mr. Spiegel was the one that first addressed workforce housing. I think we did address some of that with the, the changing of the ordinance that allowed apartments in commercially zoned areas. Now, even though we addressed that, the, with the change to the ordinance, that still hasn't happened. And maybe the market just isn't right for it today? I don't know. I, I think that the government can only do so much. Unless they want to go into the business of building and owning and, and managing. And there are some communities that do that, but I don't know if that's something that Breezy Point wants to get into.
The only reason I bring that up is, you know, the question is, is there anything in here that discourages the development of workforce housing, besides the lot, the size of the lot?
I, I think lot size could, could have a negative effect on workforce housing. I think that minimum house size could have a, a negative effect, could. When you're looking at workforce housing for the city of Breezy Point, the folks that are working here that are looking for the places to live are only making fifteen dollars an hour.
Exactly.
They are not going to be able to afford even the, the minimum twenty-six by twenty-six foot minimum house in an R three zone.
Or the fact.
Or the taxes and the maintenance and all those type of things. Those folks are more attuned to rentals, getting, building up some reserves and possibly getting, getting into a first-time homeowner type of situation.
But a developer or a builder could approach you and the city council for a planned unit development, which would then take the lot size and footprint of the house out of the equation. Is that right?
It could.
So if workforce housing, if someone wanted to build workforce housing, for example, that would be the method that I, I believe they would, that would be the starting point to take, you know, for a planned unit development.
So you're saying, Jerry, if a builder come in and said, I want forty lots and I want to change these lots from two and a half acres to two acres, you could do that?
I. Under.
Or did I misunderstand?
A planned unit development is a, is a total planned development that doesn't necessarily deal with lot, individual lot sizes.
Right, but you still.
Typically, when you're doing something like that, you're doing a townhouse development.
Okay, not a single family.
Not a single family on the lot type basis. It is more of a, a development within a development. Now, not every zoning ordinance and not every zone allows a PUD for that type of thing, but were they appropriate? I think that's a possibility. Is the market here? I don't know. The, the White Birch Townhouse, is there a PUD? Their planned unit development that was approved.
Yeah, that's true.
Many, many years ago already, of which they're on the second phase. They're almost done with the second phase right now.
Actually, they have left for the whole second phase. Third phase is always not let again.
So there are potentials to do some of that kind of stuff? Not necessarily does lot size or home size dictate all that? To develop, each one of those developments that proposed as a PUD is, is kind of reviewed on its own merit. I, I think just recently we approved a PUD for some townhomes, vacation rental units on Deacon's Lodge. Went through their approval process, got, got everything done, the I's done and crossed the T's and all of a sudden the market wasn't, didn't dictate that it was feasible to build them at this, this time. That PUD has gone away. Not to say that somebody won't resurrect that years from now, but I, I think the market dictates some of that more than anything.
Well, I'm, I'm not hearing that, unless somebody wants to speak up, I'm not hearing that we have any really good ideas for revision of, of this. Am I correct?
Yes, you are correct. Okay. I think we as staff wanted to at least visit that, those issues. So we have that discussion. I think it's healthy to have that discussion every once in a while. It was very apparent when the comp plan was done, that land use wasn't a big issue. There wasn't anything that was really addressed in that comp plan about land use.
How many tax forfeited lots are left? I have no idea.
Hundred and sixteen.
Hundred and sixteen? Not bad for four hundred and fifty or whatever it was.
Well, what the county did was a couple of years back, they combined a lot of lots. And so they turned eight lots into one lot.
Oh, okay.
And that was in the last three years.
Okay. So that math adds up then.
I, I still contend that many of those lots deserve to be tax forfeited.
Because they're not buildable lots.
Right.
Yeah.
There was one I drove by prior to the auction that has a significant decline into a sharp ravine before going back up to high ground. There's no real way, economically, of course, to build a driveway through that dip without erosion concerns and what have you. And the cost involved would outweigh the, the building.
You could give the lot for free and you still wouldn't make the numbers work, huh?
Exactly, yeah, it wouldn't matter. It'd be better parked dedicated or adjacent, the adjacent owner. If the county were to approach the adjacent owner and say, well, you take it for five hundred bucks and basically put it back on the tax roll. That's, that's, that's where I see that going.
Yeah.
Any other discussion of this, this subject? Thank you, Jerry, for putting it on me. I, I'm just curious, do you know why Baxter requires such a large home?
Why Baxter does?
Yeah. You know, I, I, I thought our minimum size was.
Well, that's, that, that's.
That's only seven hundred and twenty square.
Yeah, that isn't very big at all, quite frankly.
No, but compared to everybody else, it's quite a bit bigger.
I, you know, I think everybody is, is a little unique and they settle on numbers and. There's, I'm sure historically that had some significance, but I don't know what it is.
There's no philosophical or strategic reason.
Not that I know of. Not that I know of. The other thing I would tell you is that they, there is one other community that I know of that does have a, a minimum house size and that's nine seventy-five and that's in Aiken.
Well, we're right in line with them then. Pardon? We're right in line with them in, in some of our, in some of our zoning.
I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it, I just like it, it was, uh, something that needs to be visited every once in a while.
Thank you. Um, other, any, anything else that needs to be discussed tonight? Okay. Open forum number two. Anyone like to speak during open forum number two? If not, I'll close open forum number two and call the meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.